Do any council members have any resolution recognition this evening? Councilmember Darby, let me come up.
Good evening, everyone. So my resolution is to recognize the Delawareans for Palestinian Human Rights. We have some representatives tonight. I don't know if you guys want to start coming up, but I'm gonna read the resolution. Whereas, Councilmember Darby would like to recognize Delawareans for Palestinian Human Rights. And whereas, since its founding in 2012, this organization has worked to provide information about the people of Palestine, their culture and policies impacting their lives. And whereas, this organization works alongside numerous other organizations, including Students for Justice in Palestine, Jewish Voice for Peace, and to advocate for human rights, to bring attention to the issues of international significance, and to elevate the voices of Palestinians in Delaware and beyond. Whereas, the members of the organizations are committed to collective action to further an Israel-Palestinian resolution and a lasting peace in that region. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that the legislative body acknowledges the Delawareans for Palestinian Human Rights for their contribution to the dialogue on human rights. I don't know if Mike can number here. Okay.
So, good evening, City Council members. My name is Mike Abel. I am a Palestinian-American. I am here to support U.S. House Res 786 by Representative Cori Bush, the ceasefire resolution, and being introduced to the Wilmington City Council by Councilperson Shenee Darby. I have traveled and worked in Palestine, the West Bank, and Gaza on medical missions, and I have witnessed the Israeli occupation and also the aftermath of previous bombings in Gaza. The October 7th atrocities to the Israelis and the hostage-taking is heart-wrenching. However, the attack by Hamas does not justify further violence against Palestinian civilians. The horror of that day came in the wake of brutal violence by Israel for so many years that are responsible for the untold thousands of Palestinian deaths. We must acknowledge that the root causes of the recent violence and suffering are Israel's decades-long brutal occupation, repression, and dehumanizing treatment of Palestinians. The Palestinians of Gaza have been forcibly trapped for decades under abhorrent conditions. In the West Bank, settlers terrorize entire Palestinian villages, IDF soldiers raid and demolish Palestinian homes, murder Palestinians in the streets, and Israeli ministers call for genocide and expulsion of Palestinians. The Israeli government is not held accountable, and our U.S. government continues to fund and excuses Israeli apartheid and occupation policies. Our tax dollars are funding an all-out massacre of innocent civilians in Gaza, wiping out multi-generational families, journalists, healthcare workers, hospitals, and humanitarian resources by Israel's bombardment, which continues to a tragic disproportionate impact on civilians. Over 11,000 precious lives are dead, of which 4,700 and rising are Palestinian children, and 1,700 children are reported missing and presumed dead under the rubble. Delawareans and our groups have called on President Biden and Delaware senators and representatives to demand an immediate ceasefire to stop this catastrophic humanitarian crisis and genocide in Gaza. How can they be silent? Thank you, City Council members, for your consideration to support the ceasefire now resolution. This is a call for humanity now.
Thank Councilmember Darby for introducing this resolution, supporting Representative Cori Bush's resolution calling on the Biden administration to call for a ceasefire, although it's almost 40 days into an unfolding mass genocide in Gaza with more than 12,000 lives taken with our U.S. taxpayer dollars and weapons, and an uptick of the Israeli occupation's mass violence across occupied Palestine. Constituents have been calling their congresspeople, protesting, shutting this country down in every way, shape, and form, just to demand, just to demand our power, the power holders here, to call for an end to bombardments, to stop the bombing that is taking away lives, taking away Palestinian lives. Unfortunately, in the state of Delaware, Palestinian lives do not matter. Unfortunately, that is the case, as we have seen with our state legislators such as Senator Coons, Senator Carper, Representative Lisa Blunt Rochester, they can, they all cannot say the term ceasefire because they do not care about Palestinian lives, because they do not see Palestinians as human beings. And as Delaware constituents, we are phased by the lack of compassion, by the lack of the fact that they can't see, that they can't see that Palestinians are human beings and that they exist. It, time, we, as someone who has grown up in Delaware, who has lived here all my life, I, I, I'm appalled by how this state has not done, has done absolutely nothing to acknowledge the fact that there is an unfolding genocide happening to Palestinians under Israeli occupation. And it is time to call for a ceasefire. Forty days in, we've been screaming this every single day, and we will not stop. There needs to be a ceasefire called now, and the Biden administration needs to listen. And Delawareans have made their voice heard. We marched in front of Biden's home on Saturday. We made it clear. And it must be done now. There needs to be an end to all of these bombardments. We have also hosted a family from Gaza here through the PCRF in Delaware, and they are stuck in the South in Gaza and experiencing these bombardments. So just let that sit with you as you think about this resolution. The ceasefire needs to be called now. Thank you.
Thank you. Martine Flickstein.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so regarding a ceasefire, on October 6th, there was a ceasefire. As of October 7th, Hamas ended the ceasefire. Hamas has proudly announced that there will be as many October 7ths as necessary until Israel is wiped off of the map. It's literally in the Hamas charter. It's in their charter to kill every Jew, man, woman, and child throughout, not just Israel, but throughout the world. On October 7th, they did their part to try by barbarically murdering, raping, and beheading every Jew from babies to elders and everybody in between, literally baking babies in ovens in front of their parents, taking innocent babies, excuse me.
Hold on one second, sir. Please stop, please stop the time. WITN, thank you. We're going to allow everyone to speak. We have to be respectful. I'm going to, I know there are different opinions, but we have to allow everybody to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council. Publicly raping women and celebrating this in the streets, since when is this okay?
Sir, sir, please. Sir, you can't, you can't keep disrupting. I'm trying to be patient with you, but you can't keep doing it. That's not fair. Okay, I'm not kicking you out, but please be respectful. Sir, if you want to get public comment, you'll be able to get public comment.
Thank you for exposing, thank you for exposing yourself, sir.
Sir. Sir. We're gonna, we're gonna give you a time to speak if you'd like to give public comment. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. But please refrain from yelling. You may continue, sir.
Taking innocent babies, children, women, and elderly as hostages and keeping them. Since when is it okay to kidnap innocent people? Every Western country in the world has a right to defend itself. Are innocent children dying? Yes. Is it painful when every Palestinian child dies? Yes. Is there always collateral damage in any war? Yes. Regarding the number, the numbers of how many civilians have been killed?
Please allow him to continue. Please allow him to continue.
All of the numbers are being provided by Hamas. Since when do we trust the facts that terrorists themselves are providing? In World War II, when Britain attacked the Nazi regime, did more Germans die than Brits? Of course. But would anybody claim that the Brits were wrong in eradicating the Nazis once and for all? Of course not. Hamas is purposely embedding itself amongst its own people. Is Israel doing everything in its power to prevent as many civilian deaths in the history of any army in the world? Yes. Never in the history of the world has an army given warning to the civilians before they bomb. But of course Hamas is getting in the way, not allowing them to leave, planting themselves in hospitals and in schools. Just today, tons of missiles were found in the under storage of a young Palestinian child. There can be peace only when Hamas loves their own children as much as they hate Israel. Twenty percent of Israel's population is Arab and enjoy the highest places in Israeli society. Tens of thousands of Palestinians have working permits to go into Israel daily to join the workforce. Talk about peace?
You have 10 seconds.
What would happen if any Jew would go into Gaza for any reason? How about women's rights? How about LGBTQ rights? They would be beheaded if they stepped into Gaza. So no ceasefire until Hamas is eradicated. Free Gaza from Hamas. No ceasefire. God bless the idea.
Please allow me to control the meeting. Please allow.
God bless Israel. Bring the hostages home.
Your time is up. That's okay. Shreya Parikh, are you still with us? Shreya Parikh.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Shreya Parikh, and I'm here to speak in support of a ceasefire. While Thanksgiving is coming, I have to think, what can I be thankful for? That my tax dollars and my representatives are aiding and abetting a genocide in Palestine right now. My tax dollars, all of our tax dollars in fact, are being used to kill Palestinian families, to displace Palestinians, to kill their kids, and we're here silent. Our representatives are silent. What do I have to be thankful for? To the person who proposed that hypothetical about Israeli civilians, that is the reality in Palestine. Palestinian kids are being killed. They're being orphaned. Past animals are dying if you care about animal rights. So why haven't we done anything? Who is opposing a ceasefire? There has never been a ceasefire since 1948. For 75 years, Palestinian people have been under the oppression, unequivocally under the oppression of the Israeli military. And for those who are wondering, what does a ceasefire, what does a genocide have to do here in Delaware, in Wilmington, in the United States? Well, the Israeli military has been known to be training the police officers in the United States. It would be no shock that the Wilmington Police Department also uses those same tactics that the Israeli military is using right now to suppress Palestinians. So yes, a call to ceasefire, a support to ceasefire not only puts us on the right side of history, not only does it end an apartheid state in Palestine right now, but it's one step closer to ending the racist political, the racist political state, the racist political police state in the United States. Who opposes a ceasefire? Who opposes saving civilians, saving innocent people? And that's why, as someone who is a first-gen American, someone with roots in colonization, I have nothing to do but stand in total solidarity with my Palestinian brothers and sisters. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Honorable Council Members, good evening. My name is Josh Schoenberg, and I am the co-chair of the Jewish Community Relations Council of Delaware. We understand the emotions behind calls for a ceasefire. No one wants more suffering of bloodshed, and we mourn the loss of all innocent life. Would you not understand why the Wilmington City Council is spending this limited precious time discussing international relations when the City of Wilmington work is in its books?
Please allow him to speak.
That being said, it is worth to note that, again, there was a ceasefire on October 6th. Then, on October 7th, Hamas fighters in Gaza broke the ceasefire, invaded Israel, and brutally murdered, raped, beheaded, burned, and defiled an estimated 1,400 people, mostly Jews, but also others from over 18 countries, including Arabs and Muslims, resulting in the worst act of violence against Jews since the Holocaust. Hamas has unequivocally stated through its own leadership throughout the world that they do not want a ceasefire and hope to mimic the actions of October 7th again and again and again. In addition, we must not forget Hamas kidnapped an estimated 240 people, Jewish and non-Jewish, from more than 30 countries, including Americans who are still being held captive in the tunnels and the dirt in Gaza. When the majority of people here calls for a ceasefire, they just want the firing to stop. We understand that. Unfortunately, it's not that simple. Calling for a ceasefire now will only embolden Hamas, a brutal terrorist organization that started a war that Israel did not want. The ceasefire will condone Hamas's regime ruling Gaza, and countless civilians will continue to be slaughtered due to Hamas tactics.
Please stop, please, hold on, hold on one second, please. Please allow him to speak. I'm going to give everybody who signed up an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful. Please, thank you.
We continue to slaughter due to Hamas's tactics, including Palestinians. If Hamas fighters never attacked on October 7th and violated the existing ceasefire, we would not be sitting here right now discussing a resolution, calling for a ceasefire, plain and simple.
You have 30, you have 30 seconds.
The Jewish community has stood shoulder to shoulder with leaders in this community for civil rights, women's rights, LGBTQ+ rights, Black Lives Matter, and the Women's March, just to name a few. All we are asking is that this community stand with us in our time of need, as we have stood with all of you.
That's your time, sir.
Hi, my name is Carol Moore. I've been a peace activist since Vietnam War, on and off. I lived in DC for 32 years, where I was in lots of protests against all the things where Israel was doing, and helped organize some of the original protests against AIPAC. And pretty soon, the big groups took it over, and for about seven or eight years, they were getting, you know, 1,500 people. You know, they say, oh, this isn't relevant. When I see bombed-out Gaza, sure, I think of the lives lost, the ethnic cleansing and the genocide, but I also think all of Israel and Palestine will look like Gaza after the big nuclear war that's coming, because it's inevitable. I mean, how many times has Russia threatened to nuke us in the last year and a half? And Israel has the Samson option. If they ever feel they're losing too much, they're gonna nuke a lot of people, and a lot of people are gonna nuke them back. When I see bombed-out Gaza, I also think, if they don't nuke the port of Wilmington, how messed up will my apartment in Price's Corner be when they lob that two-megaton bomb at the Philadelphia Navy Yard? Well, all the windows are gonna be blown out, maybe a few walls too, and I'm sure some of the buildings in the complex are gonna burn. And the big nuclear war probably will happen by accident. Now, today, we have hot wars. The European crisis is because the U.S. poking the Russian bear, and now the U.S. and Israel is really pissing off the Arabs, the Muslims, and the Russian bear.
You have 15 seconds.
So, yeah, I think nuclear war is relevant, and I think it's time that we all start living in reality, because that's where we're going. And it could be 20, it could be 24, 25, we'll see.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you so much. My name's Karen Igo. Now I'm mad, thought I was gonna cry, now I'm pissed. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Councilwoman Darby, for having us here to support this resolution. There has not been a ceasefire in Palestine. There has been, on average, one Palestinian killed every day this year. The people in Gaza live in an open-air prison. Every move they make is monitored by the government of Israel. The government of America has given Israel almost $160 billion since 1948. If that is not enough to keep them safe, I don't know what to say about that. So that's what I'll say back to the person who was a Zionist who just left, because being a Zionist is not the same as being Jewish. Okay? I'm gonna try not to be shaken. I am in, I am in support of this resolution. I hope Council will please be in support of this resolution. When I call my U.S. legislators, as I do every day, I demand they call for a ceasefire in Palestine, release of the Israeli hostages by Hamas, and Palestinian prisoners by Israel, most of whom are women and children, and liberation for Palestine. The persecution of Jews is unacceptable. All genocide is unacceptable. The government of Israel is insane, and our government is backing it. I'm disgusted by my tax dollars going towards revenge, ego-driven genocide by madmen propped up for American imperialism and racism. I am disgusted by supporting a country that holds brown people in open-air prisons and allows them no rights. I stand with the Jews that are calling for a ceasefire. The events committed by Hamas on 10/7 were horrific, and they would be the focus right now if Israel had not responded with the war crimes of collective punishment, forced removal, and targeting civilians. Even if there is truly found to be Hamas infrastructure under Al Sheifa Hospital, where thousands have sheltered that have nowhere else to go, in addition to those that are in there for care, the Geneva Convention prohibits putting military action over civilian life. I should not have to explain why genocide is wrong. Please join the call for a ceasefire. Please educate yourself. Don't just listen to Western media. They'll make you think this is super complicated. It's not. Genocide is wrong. War is wrong. War begets war, violence begets violence. Please look further than mainstream media. It is not hard to decide that genocide is wrong.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
30 seconds. All genocide. Indigenous peoples that were genocided here, Sudan happening right now, there's more. Nazi Germany. We know what genocide looks like, and it looks like this, and it's not okay. We can't get anywhere until we have a ceasefire, and then we get Palestinian liberation, and enough with treating these people like dogs. Thank you so much for your time. Please, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Amna Rose. I'm a Palestinian-American, here to be a voice for those silenced. War, just three letters, it does not even begin to scratch the surface of the devastation that it represents. My heart is bleeding. Bodies upon bodies, my heart drowns in the mourning of the innocent souls being ripped away from us. Forty fake children, and the world lost its mind, but yet over 4,500 real children killed, and the world stays silent. Your silence is betrayal. Your silence is complicit. Your silence is cowardly. Your silence is inhumane, and your silence is murder. Watching what's happening in Palestine behind a screen in the comfort of my own home is a guilt felt like no other. Palestine has changed our hearts forever. The way I see this temporary world, I no longer desire for materialism. Breathing clean air has become a luxury. Having two legs has become a luxury. Clean water has become a luxury, and Advil has become a luxury. Just the peace of knowing that a bomb is not gonna fall on my head at any given moment is a luxury. The brutality and savagery we are witnessing in front of our very eyes are of such an extreme and unprecedented nature that even the greatest of literacy figures would find it nearly impossible to put into words the sheer horror and inhumanity that is taking place. The indifference toward one community is absolutely absurd. The thousands of innocent lives being taken away from us and over 1.5 million left displaced. And I am not just emphasizing on the physical displacement, I am also addressing the mental and emotional displacement that will never return to its original state. This is not a war against religion, this is a war against humanity. In the midst of all the misleading news, the propaganda, and the humanitarian lies, it is so important that we use our voice to spread the truth. Throughout history, Palestinians have been brutally expelled from their homes and land, including my own grandparents. My grandmother died a refugee dreaming to a one-day-free Palestine, where she could once again breathe the air of the land she so ripely deserved to breathe. Zionism will not outlive humanity. It was not okay in South Africa. It was not okay in Nazi Germany. So why is it okay in Palestine? Do not call it a conflict when children playing on the street are murdered. Do not call it a war when one side has a billion-dollar ammunition stockpile funded by the U.S. and the other has nothing but resilience. Call it for what it is: ethnic cleansing, occupation, discrimination, and genocide. This is years of war crimes, colonialism, and apartheid. Today, we fight back.
You have 10 seconds.
We fight back the, sorry, a second. We go to the end of my speech.
Take your time.
I stand here demanding not only for a ceasefire on Gaza, but for you to stand on the right side of history. The Palestinian genocide will be in our history books and is a stain to humanity. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamim Hussain. I'm a pediatrician here in Delaware, serving the patients of Wilmington. I'm commenting on the resolution regarding a ceasefire. 4,609, that is the number of children, as of the last time I checked, that have been killed in Gaza. Some previous speakers have cast doubt on that number. It is a number trusted by the World Health Organization, who has repeatedly supported the numbers put out by the Health Ministry in Gaza. That would be equivalent to one of every four of our children here in Wilmington dying in the span of one month. As a pediatrician in training, I dedicate my time to learn how to care for our most vulnerable patients here in Wilmington. We put innumerable amounts of time and effort into understanding the value of a single child's life, and anytime we lose any one of our patients, we have extensive time and effort taken to support those who have witnessed such an event. And I mention that all to tell you that this is happening dozens of times daily as we speak currently in Gaza. We're told that the children dying are being used as human shields. Even if we take such a claim at face value, who amongst us, sitting in the room or virtually, would justify the killing of a child or a baby even in such circumstances? In any case, the images of leveled apartment buildings, damaged hospitals, and starving children seem to belie a much deeper disregard for the lives of Palestinian children than simply collateral damage. I reject assertions by previous speakers that these children must be killed for some sort of higher moral objective. If killing children is the cost you're willing to pay for your higher moral objective, you likely should question the entire moral standing of your project in the first place. For me, the past four weeks have informed us of a very clear choice. You either want the killing of children to stop You either want the killing of children to stop, or you don't. There is a clear path towards stopping it, and that is a ceasefire. There's a clear path towards the killing of children and babies continuing, and that is silence, or even worse, complicity with the ongoing atrocities. We need to stop the killing of the children and babies. I urge you all to support the resolution for a ceasefire and demonstrate that the lives of children are priority of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Congo, thank you very much for hosting this public forum. And all of you here, as a comedian once said, this is a pretty rough house for someone wearing a yarmulke. I'll try to put this as simply as I can. I didn't come with prepared statement. I've visited the area of Sterot, right opposite Gaza City, gosh, maybe 15 years ago. And a woman there told us that when she came with her husband, right before the Oslo Accords, around four or five years before, that her husband was a farmer, and he would go out into the fields with the other farmers, and the Muslim Arab farmers from Gaza City would come out, and they would have their lunches together under the trees near the border. She said, "In those days, there was no fence, it was all open, and people came to know each other as people. It wasn't Jews, Muslims, they were farmers." So they talked about farming, and they talked about their families, and they found they had a lot in common. And over the years, they started going to weddings and birthday parties. And then came the Oslo Accords. And with the Oslo Accords, which are high-minded, came something different. It came, a fence came up with barbed wire. It was when Yasser Arafat, Arafat came back from Crete with his army. And very shortly, there was no more visiting and shopping in each other's stores, there was no more farming next to the fence, there were landmines. And then there started being rockets, coming unfortunately, from Gaza City. And the Gazans would call, they would call the Jews in Israel and say, "Were you okay? Were you hurt?" And then Israel started retaliating, and they called and said the same thing, because they knew each other as people. Now, that's just a reality that very few people have heard about, and I appreciate you listening to my true story. I witnessed this. I, I put this even on YouTube, this interesting story. So to sort of come back to today.
30 seconds.
The terrible thing is that there is an organization that succeeded Yasser Arafat that if you take the time, read its charter, I'm not going to say it says this and that, you read it, see what it says the mission is, and then you'll understand why Israel is doing what it's doing. Thank you. You almost restrained yourself, was commendable.
Thank you. Next, we have...
Hi, good evening. My name is Dawn Moore. I am a mother, midwife, nurse practitioner, and resident of Wilmington for the last 12 years. As a mother, I empathize with the anguish felt by parents in Gaza, who, like any of us, desire a safe and nurturing environment for their children to grow. The current genocide has senselessly taken the lives of thousands of their sweet innocent babies and children. As a mother, my heart breaks for the thousands of children who've had to watch their families murdered and who are now left alone in this world as traumatized orphans. As a midwife, I'm disgusted knowing how many pregnant individuals and their fetuses are suffering irreparable trauma at the hands of the Israeli government. Access to essential maternal health and childcare services have been completely obliterated. It is unfathomable that C-sections are being performed without anesthesia in a last ditch effort to save lives, despite knowing that those mothers and babies have an incredibly high chance of dying in the days that follow postpartum due to hemorrhage, infection, dehydration, or even more likely, weapons funded by our tax dollars. As a nurse practitioner, I'm wildly in awe of the strength and perseverance of fellow healthcare workers in Gaza who've fought around the clock for the last 38 days to try to save lives. Over 200 healthcare workers have been killed by the Israeli forces since October 7th while just doing their jobs. As a resident of Wilmington, I'm here to support Shanae Darby's resolution for immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me tonight. I just wanted to point out, I am against the ceasefire for Gaza, only because the ceasefire now will be a continual fire moving forward. I really believe in a free Palestine, a Palestine that is free from terrorists, free from Hamas, who really don't care about their own people. Why would anyone want to live in such a situation, who brought this upon their people? Billions of dollars of aid given, and they put it into buying missiles and creating 800 miles of tunnels for weaponry, instead of giving it to their own people and helping to build a proper city? They oppress their own people. They don't deserve to be terrorized any longer. We need to free Palestine from Hamas. Hamas, a murderous terrorist organization. The difference between Israel and Hamas is that Hamas targets children. Israel does not want to target children. Hamas purposefully goes and murders in the most vicious way. A child only yesterday, after 39 days from October 7th, was discovered of who they were from DNA testing. It took 39 days to identify her body because of how badly and despicably it was obliterated by the Hamas terrorist organization. 39 days to recognize a human being? I don't even want to think about how they tortured her.
Hold on, hold on one second, ma'am. Ma'am, hold on one second, please. WITM, please pause your time. You're putting me in a really difficult situation, sir. Like, I don't, I don't want to have to, like, kick you out, but you're doing it to yourself. You can't keep being disfucked. That's not fair. That's not fair. Just please let her speak. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out that I've been listening all evening, and it amazes me how the pro-Hamas supporters here have repeatedly interrupted anybody who goes against what they're saying, whereas the pro-Israel have been peacefully listening, a sign of who stands behind goodness. Anyways, I will continue. That the Hamas regime purposefully targets children, they have purposefully kidnapped children from their beds and from their cribs, children of all ages, and adults and elderly, in order to torture them. There's been no contact with the hostages. Where, why do their lives not matter? Nobody has mentioned their lives, whereas we've repeatedly mentioned our horror at the loss of life of the Palestinian people, the innocent people who are dying is horrendous. It's awful. And it is terrible that Hamas has put its people in such a position.
You have 30 seconds.
I feel terrible for the Palestinian people who deserve to be freed from Hamas. Israel does not target children. Hamas targets children. Israel is wiping out Hamas, and if Hamas puts their own children in front of Israel's way, there's no choice. Not because, what do you expect if you have a murderer attacking you with a child in front of them, and you're going to say, "I still wouldn't kill the child," so you're going to die? I'd like to see you in their shoes, and you be the one that Hamas is targeting with a child as their shield, and see what you do in such a situation. We care about life, we care about children, we care about a free Palestine from Hamas and a continual war and not an end and ceasefire. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. WITM.
And I wanted to point out, there's such antisemitism in this room. The anti-Zionism is anti-Semitic antisemitism. It's unbelievable.
Good late evening, folks. Thank you, Council President, Council members, and audience. There's a lot of interesting information. I'm an American-Jewish physician, and I would say that many of the people you have heard have never been to Gaza, have never operated in Hebron like I have, don't speak Hebrew like I do. I've worked in Israel, I've worked in Palestine, I've worked in Gaza and seen what's happened, and what happened before all of these events. Before all these events, it was an open-air prison in Gaza. Nothing could get in. Tomato sauce wasn't allowed in. Potatoes weren't allowed in. And somebody was talking about children. There are 1,208 Palestinian children in military prisons in the West Bank. So that's 1,208 people, no advocacy, no parents, no crime attested to, and no way out. And that Hamas is an example of extremism, but it's an example of extremism that's responding to 75 years of occupation. Imagine three generations living in a refugee camp, what happens? And meanwhile, you don't see on the other side, because a lot of my Jewish friends and colleagues have bitten the apple of AIPAC and the Israeli propaganda that has been emboldened by the United States Congress. And many people understand this, including a few congressmen, but they do not speak up. But the reason to be here tonight is because we are all interested in humanity, all interested in avoiding genocide, and it does affect each of us, not only by our tolerance for where we spend our money, but also for our tolerance about humanity. And if none of our organizations and our federal legislators are doing anything about it, why shouldn't City Council be the first one that takes a moral stand, has a conscience, and is a force for change? And it's the only organizing body and governmental body that can say something? I think it starts here. And if it starts here, if it starts here, other parts of this country, other parts of this state are going to hear. Last Saturday, 1,000 people plus marched on Biden's home. That's a lot of people for Wilmington, Delaware.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
And obviously, there's a lot of spirit about this, and I thank Councilman Darby for bringing this up. I appreciate you people of conscience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Miller. I'm a resident in the 7th District, and I'm going to speak on two issues today, obviously. One is going to be on the ceasefire, and one is going to be on residency. And I'll start with residency.
Thanks.
It won't be, right? And a lot of people are asking the question, "Oh, you know, you know, we got so much stuff in the city we got to do, we got so many issues in the city that we got to solve. Why are we worried about ceasefire? Why are we worried about Israel and Palestine?" You know why? Because in the 1990s, y'all wanted us to sit up here and worry about, about South Africa and apartheid, right? Right? What did Martin Luther King say? Was it "Justice anywhere is injustice everywhere," something like that, right? Something along the lines of that? That's why we standing up. That's why we're out here. If I got to stay out here for five hours to ask for ceasefire, I'm going to stand out here, just like I stood out here for five hours for like the last two, three weeks, right? Asking for what? Residency. Because I stand in solidarity with my people. And that was, that's my people, right?
Everyone, thank you for coming out today. My name is Lovely Lacy. I'm a resident of the 1st District. Shout out, Shanae.
I'm the 2nd.
Oh, I mean, 2nd District, 2nd District, yeah.
Okay.
All right, you know, you know. I'm here today to talk about two things. One, it's already enough traffic up and down 95 and Route 13. Another thing is, I feel like folks forget what it really means to say, "No justice, no peace." Okay, it's not just a chant. We demand justice, or you and your cronies will have no peace. Okay? So I stand for liberation and freedom of Palestinians, Palestinians from the river to the sea. I do not support Zionist extremism and terroristic violence that Israel perpetuates. I stand firmly against antisemitism and Islamophobia. When folks ask, "What can we possibly do?", what, we actually have more power than we think. We live in the core of the empire, okay? In the banking capital of the country. We have way more access to our lawmakers than most folks in other states do. We give, you give your, your power away as soon as you think international news is never going to reach your shores, right? Harriet Tubman said, she could have saved a lot more people if they knew that they were slaves, right? And I feel like we could do a lot more if we knew what power we had. And people power is the way to get things done. Only hegemonic entities get into war. War is unnecessary. Give me a room full of women and a nice pot roast, and we can come to an agreement. It doesn't have to come to war. Okay? Palestinians are not in an open-air prison because prison implies that they did something wrong. Call it what it is. It's a concentration camp, apartheid. I also want to leave you with this. When enslaved Africans fought against brutal regimes like South Africa and here on Turtle Island, we did not turn around and kill every single white landowner and human trafficker we saw, although it was very warranted. Zionists are scared because they think folks want retribution and revenge. They should be gleefully glad we are just demanding freedom and not revenge. Stand on the right side of history, say no to war, say yes to ceasefire. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. Thank you.
My name is Talia, District 6. And I am an educator. I'm a person who pushes for peace. I'm a person who's been on three separate peace missions. I've been an advocate for over 20 years. And I'm a person who has spent my life building relationships with Palestinian civilians. It's something that was really, really important to me from the time that I was in high school. I created bonds, I spent time understanding they are. And I want to correct a couple of things that I've heard so far, but then I also want to share some things about why I believe that it's not in their best interests, what we are advocating for here tonight, at least the majority. When you speak to them, they have an idea of what they want. They know what they want. They want to be free. They want to live without anyone telling them who they are, or what they need to be, or anything like that. The problem is that here in the United States, everyone wants to speak for them, and I think that that's really inappropriate. The fact that we are in Wilmington, sorry for the, as you can see, we love kids here. The fact that we are in Wilmington and we're speaking for Palestinians, I can say from my life experience that it's not appropriate. I'm speaking, again, from over 20 years of relationships with them. When you say ceasefire, the definition of a ceasefire is as follows. Is a temporary suspension of fighting, typically one during which peace talks take place. It's also known as a truce. The problem is that in order for that to be the case, both sides need to agree to it. We don't find ourselves in that position. When Gazans were filmed leaving the...
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Thank you. When Gazans were filmed leaving the region, they begged us, they begged us in Arabic, and I'm sure very few people here speak Arabic, but they begged us to help them. They didn't beg us for a ceasefire. They begged us to help them get rid of Hamas. They begged us to help them get rid of Yahya Ashkenor.
You have 10 seconds.
They begged us to help them get rid of Ismail Kania. Let's listen to Palestinians, not to people on the other side of the world who have nothing to lose. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Nace. I have some prepared remarks that I'm, I'm going to save the time and, and not give. Say that I support the, the resolution to create a ceasefire, and I just wanted to comment on my personal reasons for, for thinking about that. It feels to me like this boils down to a moral issue. It is killing, starving innocent citizens, keeping medical supplies away is a moral issue. And we all, all of us good folks that go to church on Sundays need to recognize that we have a moral issue to create a ceasefire. We want to stop the killing. So we have an, we have an issue then to pressure the federal legislators that represent us. They're the only folks that can really help us. Wilmington can pressure them, Wilmington Council can pressure them, we can pressure them. So we should get on the phone, and we only have three. And we ought to really hit the three hard with our view of stopping this... And we ought to really hit the three hard with our view of stopping this moral dilemma and creating a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may, Mr. President, before my timer starts, just for the sake of safety, I would just like to say one thing.
Sure.
For the purpose of the hostility that we've seen today, that is occurring now, I do not consent anyone to take a video or picture of me tonight, except for the one person that I have allowed. And that goes for our virtual folks, too.
I'll just let you know that this is on air live. Okay? Thank you.
Assalamualaikum. Peace be upon you all. I'm going to echo one of the speakers who said, "Let's listen to Palestinians." My name is Dr. Afnan. I'm a Palestinian-American pediatrician. I am the granddaughter of survivors of the NECA in 1948. I am the daughter of refugees who grew up with Lebanese travel documents. I'm American by birth, and now a mother to a beautiful, almost two-year-old daughter who many of us have heard her wailing in the background. Thank God her dad came back and took her. I exist today because, and I thank you, honorable gentlemen, for mentioning the love that we have amongst each other. I am here today because a Jewish family saved my great-grandfather from being, with his wounds, by the British mandate. To the speaker who claims to represent the Jewish population of Delaware, no. The closest people, the closest people to me and my biggest allies are of the Jewish faith who are saying, "Do not commit genocide in our names." I understand the pain of the people being held hostages. Believe me, I know, because my family in the West Bank is currently being held hostage by the Israeli occupation forces in their own home, and the Israeli government's arming of settler civilians to dictate its main objective, which is the ethnic cleansing of Palestinians out of the Holy Land, that is for all of us, that extends from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea. And I ask, why is collective liberation and equal rights for all so threatening to people who claim that they honor the sanctity of life? Blaming the Palestinian people for their own deaths is such a severe mental gymnastic issue which enshrouds and justifies a genocide, and the "what aboutism" that I've heard tonight is astonishing. To the speaker who said, "20% of the Arab population in Israel exists because Israel's so generous, 20% of the Arab population also undergo severe voter oppression, suppression, which we see here in the United States. And the Arab population in the occupied territories have been arrested and are currently in prison for even liking a Facebook post." Queer Palestinians do exist, I just spoke to one today, and it's interesting that speakers against a ceasefire are speaking about sanctity of life. I speak tonight as a physician who finished her training in this very state. I speak today as a mother who became, who was reborn as a mother in this very state. And I center all three of these aspects in my statement tonight. I urge city council to advocate for a ceasefire now, having cared for newborns in neonatal ICUs, to patients in inpatient services, to patients within pediatric ICUs.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Thank you. To date, three NICU babies have passed away in a shifa. And just to explain what happened, a premature baby is born with so little fat stores, most notably brown fat, which is very quickly used as fuel for the body and doesn't act as a good insulin eater. It's now winter in Gaza, and without thermal regulation, the body goes into complete overdrive and eventually causes severe brain damage, seizures, and eventually death. And the reason why I say this with such a heavy heart is because it is harrowing that I know the mechanism of deaths of each one of these children. So I urge for a ceasefire because I too stand for the life of all. Thank you.
Founded by Yaya Naval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. This resolution be received, recorded, filed, adopted by Yaya Naval on the question.
Yeah, so this resolution, we heard a lot about this tonight. This is about the immediate, the call for an immediate ceasefire for the Israel and occupied Palestine conflict that is happening now. And for me, just a little background, tell you about how I got to this point of presenting this resolution. A lot of times, I am an avid reader, and I remember reading about a lot of atrocities that have happened in history, and I will always question the morality of the people during that time. Like, how could we have let that happen? Why didn't more people speak up, right? How did we allow this? And for me, I understand that wars are happening, right? But, and I think a lot of times, we push it back in our minds, and we go on with our everyday lives to deal with our own lived issues that we have here. You know, specifically as a black person, I have enough to deal with in my own backyard of oppression and dealing with white supremacists, cis-heterosexual settler colonists here, right? But for me, as my people have resisted and fought for liberation on this occupied land, but what made a difference for me, I think, is social media, right? As I watched humans, people die in front of my, like, eyes, like seeing children being pulled out of the, like, the rocks, the bombing that was happening, I literally cried. And then what really hit me is when they called them collateral damage. That was a human life, right? So for me, it hit home, and I actually had to stop watching it, and I had to stop watching it the same way that I have to stop watching black Americans being killed by police officers. Because when we are killed, I can't watch them anymore. I really can't. So I had to stop watching the videos of the people who were getting bombed there, right? So it hit a whole nother trigger for me of what it meant to be black in America and understanding my connection globally to other people who were oppressed. And then I was also listening on, like, YouTube and trying to understand what was going on. Like, I always knew about the conflict to really, like, educate myself, right? And someone was, had this quote, it was from, and I hate, oh, I feel it's cliched to quote Martin Luther King, but he talked about, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Right? So I was like, I have a voice, right? And I need to use that voice. And I realized the same people I question when I read those books, I used to stay up late at night, people get in trouble, kids get in trouble for iPad, sneaking. I was up reading books at night, and I remember questioning the morality of the people and the stories that I was reading. But now I'm questioning mine. Because I am the person that, when someone else reads a book about today, what happened with Israel and Palestine, they're going to question the morality about the people and what we did. So I want to be on the right side of history. I know I could not be quiet. I could not be silent about this. My ancestors won't let me be quiet. I tried before, but I understand my calling. So I must use my voice to give power to the people. I say no to genocide. I say no to occupation. I say no to imperialism. I say no to apartheid. I say no to colonialism. And I believe in the power of, I believe in the power of duality, right? And in understanding this, like, I'm trying to position myself as a black American and what it means to navigate domestic issues. Like, tonight, we're talking about residency, and we're talking about a global issue, right? And I feel like I can focus on domestic issues for my people and provide support to those who are globally oppressed. Because I understand black liberation is connected to global liberation of other black and brown people. And I believe that all humans have the right to a homeland, to clean water, fresh water, fresh air, food, quality housing and safety, and as well as relationship with other humans in the form of families and community. So I'm more for the Israel and Palestine lives that were lost, right? And I believe that the United States government, we have to, at all levels, because someone said, "Why are we doing this on a city level?" I think it's my job to hold myself accountable, my colleagues accountable, the state level accountable, federal government, county council accountable, when I see atrocities happening and that we should be speaking up for. So I'm proud to join my colleagues across the country about this matter, that our taxpayer dollars are paying for, right? And we have to use our voice, we have to use public forum and community engagement to bring these issues to light. So I am urging the Biden administration to call for immediate ceasefire, to stop the current violence, and ensure that the desperately needed humanitarian aid can be delivered. So ceasefire now on Palestinian people. So this resolution, which is really important, Congresswoman Cori Bush presented a resolution. And this resolution is vital because it asks for the ceasefire to deliver assistance to the 2.2 million people who are under siege and trapped in Gaza. And we know that the United States is playing a big role in this, and we know there's a lot of people, we're living here, that we are not in support of it. We can't bomb our way to peace, equality, and freedom with thousands of lives being lost and millions more at stake. So I believe we need a ceasefire. And I'm grieving for everyone, the Palestinians, the Israel people, the American people, and the majority of the world is saying no. Over hundreds of protests across the world, in London, in Delaware, in all parts of the world, Australia, I'm watching it on social media. I'm taking this in, they're marching. People are walking out of their jobs, saying this is unacceptable, like, and the United Nations, they had a vote, a resolution. 120 were in favor of ceasefire. 14 were against, and 45 abstained. So think about that. The majority of countries are saying, "Stop. Please stop." And they're not stopping. So to me, I'm standing with everyone, and I also want to say that I stand with the Jewish people, but I separate being Jewish from being an Israel settler and a Zionist. And I remember, and I denounced the German regime that slaughtered more than 6 million Jews, so I stand with y'all in that, but in not in, in the Zionist movement. As such, we recognize the removal of indigenous Palestinians from their land to establish Israel is not even justice for the Jewish people. Instead, the United States and the United Kingdom invented the Zionist state as a colonial outpost to protect Western capitalist interests in the Middle East. So we have to be very clear on what this is about. So my thing is, how many more humans, children, women, men, people need to die for us to care? So that's where I stand today. So at this point, city council can vote how they want, but I know when I look back, and I'm sitting in my rocking chair, 70, 80 years old, got my grandkids around me, great-grandkids, I'm gonna know I did the right thing in this moment. Free Palestine, power to the people.
Any council members have any, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilmember White.
Thank you. Eric Garner, Michael Bay, Tamir Rice.
Yes.
Philando Castile. Stephanie Clark. I wonder where the outrage, where's the ongoing outrage? We live in a country that black babies are three more times likely to die before they age one. Black maternity deaths, four times high as white. Where's the outrage? Students graduate in Delaware, reading at a 6th grade level. When the Tutsis were killing the Houthis, who was there? We talk about refugee camps. We have 200,000 in Sudan. Now, where was the outrage? 5 million people, 77% of the population in Congo has been killed. I too believe in duality. I too believe that the suffering on both sides of this is enormous. But when I leave this place to go into the first and talk to Mr. Saunders, or Mr. Leggett, or Mr. Houston, the pains of this particular conflict is not their concern. I know, and I echo Councilman Darby's strong, strong concern for humanity. I just want to know, where's the outrage? There have been so many voices that came before us in the city that I'm kind of certain that they were strangers to, but they found their way here. And walking past all of the things that I just talked about, where's the outrage? As a black man in America, I feel, I fear much more than anyone could. And all human life is precious. I couldn't read the names of the people who died before their time at the hands of those who were sworn to protect them. I read this resolution, and the immediate de-escalation and expressed concern for health and safety touches me concerningly. But I, I don't have to go five blocks. I don't have to go five blocks, and I got health and safety concerns. Where's the outrage? You can't just get me here on this through those voices, virtual and present. I read an oath, the public's interest, and yet I stand here leaning in the direction of this resolution. I could not go there without letting you know where's the outrage. Don't ask me to do something on behalf of others that they won't do on behalf of me.
Please allow him to continue. Thank you.
So we can get here, we can get my support, not for applause, but at the end of the day, there's a check need to be paid. There's a balance on human and safety issues within blocks of us. I want to know where will that outrage come? No further comment, Mr. President.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I do want to echo the sentiments of my council member colleagues, Councilmember White, and I definitely ditto with Councilmember Darby, I have to say, which was very eloquently stated, and it was definitely well-received. But I too want to express my concerns and my advocacy for peace and justice, for humanitarian efforts. As the city council representative, I am deeply concerned about the ongoing situation in Gaza as well. The escalating violence, the loss of innocent lives, they really are distressing. And I do believe that they do demand immediate attention. And so I too strongly urge all parties involved that are capable, that are able, to prioritize a dialogue, to de-escalate, and prayerfully come to a peaceful resolution to all of this conflict. And I just want to end with, I do stand in solidarity with the people of Gaza. They have my support, and I just pray for peace and that those that can continue to raise the awareness about the situation. And I hope that we all can work together to promote more peace, justice, and understanding through dialogue, empathy, and have a commitment to human rights that we can hope for a brighter future and way of life for everyone, and especially those affected by the conflict in Gaza. Thank you, Mr. President. And I support this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver. Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
I just wanted to echo with Councilwoman Darby, Councilmember White, Councilmember Harley, I too support this resolution to ceasefire on both sides. And thank you.
Are there any council member, other council members who are virtual?
Yes, yes, Council President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Um, I, I again echo the sentiment of my colleagues. And I have a unique position, actually. So I, me, along with the mayor and some top city officials, we went to and signed a sisterhood, a sister city agreement last year, last spring, with the country of Qatar. We actually signed an agreement with Doha. And looking at the global, again, we have to look at what the facts are right now. And the country that's negotiating freeing hostages is Qatar. Qatar is the government that actually is, is calling for the truce right now. So supporting our brothers and sisters in Qatar, I believe, is the thing for Wilmington to do. They are our sister city. Because they are the brokers. They're like the Delaware of the Middle East. They're small but mighty. And so they are the ones trying to broker a deal, at least temporarily. It was in Reuters today, even asking for a three-day truce just so humanitarian supplies can get into the Gaza Strip. That is the truth. We have to look at facts. You can't get your information from social media. And the misinformation spread tonight frankly is harmful and painful. And so the citizens of Wilmington have to get the correct information. We have credible news sources. We have Reuters. We have New York Times, other places where you can get information. But that's what's going on right now. And the UN, as Councilwoman Darby said, has voted. They've supported a, a truce. And I've heard from constituents on both sides, those with family in Israel who actually, you know, support this. Again, we're asking for a truce. We're asking for de-escalation. We're not saying stop everything. We're asking to, to save human life. And again, I'm one of those people too, you know, at the end of the day, we all have to face the maker. And kind of like the Iraq war vote, people now, they say, oh, well, you know, there's only a few people that voted against it. So, you know, we have to learn from history. You can't repeat it. And so we have to be the ones to step up and say, "Look, the federal delegation, state officials, we're Biden's home state. We have to take this seriously. At least stop arming Israel. Let's de-escalate. Let's work with the country of Qatar to free hostages and preserve Israel life." And I'm, I'm, as anti-Semitic as you can be, I'm also anti-Islamophobia. And we have to stand for both when we can in City Wilmington.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council members who have comments?
Council President.
Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. I should say for the record, and it was on the agenda, last meeting or the meeting before that, a couple days after the attack, there was a unity rally at the JCC. And I took a recognition that essentially unequivocally condemned the Hamas terrorist attack and showed our solidarity and support with the Jewish people and Israel. And I did have the thought of, do I do this as a recognition or a resolution that we discuss? And I quickly realized, well, it would be totally ridiculous for a Wilmington City Council to be discussing and debating an international incident. But that is what we are doing anyway tonight. But on the merits of this, to me, there's 240 hostages that are still kidnapped. That's the equivalent of several thousand Americans, population-wise. So for us to tell Israel to stand down and not look for your brothers, sisters, mothers, daughters, to me, you know, we are not centering their experience at all. So if Hamas wants a ceasefire, they can release the hostages and we can take it from there. But, you know, I, we, I think we need to stand with Israel and the Jewish people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other council members have any comments? Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Field.
Yes, Mr. President. Basically, because this resolution does not address the Wilmington City Council issue, I will be therefore voting no.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any comments? Return back to the sponsor.
Yes, um, so there's a few things I want to just address real quick. We talked about duality. I don't think caring about our issues here negates having to care about other issues. Outrage, there is outrage. And someone, I think Councilmember White quoted, black maternal health care rates. I'm really, really humble in most parts, for the most case, but I have started, I'm one of the loudest voices around black maternal health care for the state of Delaware in regards to getting legislation. So when you talk about outrage, I'm, I'm doing the work, okay? So like, when people complain about the outrage, what are you doing? What are you organizing, right? I helped Kobe plan one of the largest protests around police brutality. I was a part of that group. Network Delaware, a part of so many groups around housing, around so many different issues and so many, I can't even name all of them. I'm a part of these groups every day doing the outrage, the work. So when, when people complain about where's the outrage, I'm gonna ask, what are you doing? Right? That's my first question. Because there is outrage and there is work happening here in the city of Wilmington and throughout the state of Delaware. And especially, when people bring up black maternal health care, I am one of the loudest. And I like to be humble, but it is what it is. And then the other part is Palestinian solidarity. That's why I think education is important. Black people and Palestinian people have been in solidarity for decades. Like, you have to educate yourself. SNCC, Malcolm X, um, there's a whole list here. Like, just if you just Google, and like, you just Google and you see the black Palestinian solidarity that has always existed. And Palestinian people, the same train, our police department gets trained by Israel military. When the Black Lives Matter movement, when the Black Lives Matter movement happened, who gave Black Lives Matter activists tips on how to deal with tear grass? Palestinian organizers, okay? I don't think you under, that's why it's so important, especially black people. Educate yourself before y'all talk, especially about solidarity with other groups of people. Please educate yourself about it. That's why before I talked and got on, I said, "Let me educate myself. Let me read. Let me talk to different people on both sides." Because I want to hear opposing and I want to hear people who are for the other side I agree with. And our money is going overseas, our taxpayer dollars. So when you say it doesn't impact us on this level, my, I work. And I see the taxes coming out my check. And that money is going towards supporting Israel in this war and this conflict and this genocide. So to act like this doesn't impact us and that people here need, don't need a voice, it's sad to even say that. So millions of dollars, so I pray for peace. I pray for freeing the Palestinian people. I pray for the Israel people, what they're going through with the hostages and all that and trying to find their, I can sympathize with that too. I think all of that can happen at one time. I don't think I have to be totally, oh, I'm so this or so that. I don't think I have to be polarizing or in so total opposition. But I am for and I am against occupation, right? And I'm against colonialism, all the things I mentioned earlier. So I just want to rock out with the vote, but I just wanted to mention those things because that is not true. There always has been Palestinian solidarity since back in the day before I was even here. It was here. And there is duality. One doesn't negate the other. And there is outrage happening. Just what are you doing?
Do you want to call for the roll?
Yes.
Clark, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman White. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
She's now on the floor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman Fields. Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Field.
No.
Councilman Mills. Councilwoman Spadola.
No.
President Congo.
Uh, Councilmember Oliver is back on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Bracy once again. President Congo. Six yeas, two nays, one present and four absent.
Said six yeas.
Six yeas, two nays, one present and four absent.
A parliamentarian, would that be adopted? Because it's a resolution?
Right.
I can't remember.
Turn on my video. Yes. Good, good evening. So it was six yeas, two nays, one present and four absent?
Correct.
All right, so it's present and voting since the council members, since the only one absent is, actually absent is Councilwoman Carrera. I would say that there's 12. But of those who actually voted, there were eight. So six yeas, resolution passes.
Thank you, parliamentarian. Declare adopted.